Okay, with that, I'm going to call the regular city council meeting for January 22nd to order, please, and I'm going to ask for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Martinez Bravo?
Here.
Councilwoman Santangelo?
Here.
Vice Mayor, um, was it Councilwoman Trembling?
Here.
And Mayor Killie?
Here.
I'd like to reply, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Tennyson is not here.
Okay, so with that, we do have closed session items, I believe. I'm going to ask the counselor, would you please explain the reasons why we're going to go into closed session?
Certainly, there are two items on closed session this evening for the city council agenda. Formance evaluation for the city attorney and conference on anticipated litigation under government code section 549, 56.9. And if there's any reportable action, I will make that report.
Okay, so with that, we will be in closed session and returning right around 5 o'clock. You
Going to call the Industrial Development Authority Regular Meeting to order, and I'm going to ask for a roll call, please.
Director Martinez Bravo?
Here.
Director Santangelo?
Here.
Director Tremblay?
Yes.
And Chair Kildy?
Yes, here.
Let the record reflect that Vice Chair Tennyson is absent.
Okay. So with that, we have a flag salute, Mr. Tremblay, would you mark, please? We have several short meetings to do before we get to the regular council agenda, so bear with us if you would. So that gets us down to the consent calendar for the Industrial Development Authority Regular Meeting.
A second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Would you like to do a roll call with that?
Director Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Director Santangelo?
Yes.
Director Tremblay?
Yeah.
And Chair Kildy?
Yes.
Okay, that gets us down to Board and Staff Comments and Reports. Any Board or Staff comments at this particular time?
No.
Hearing none, or adjourned? That, I'm going to open up the agenda for the Camrio Capital Improvement Corporation Regular Meeting for January 22nd, and let the record reflect that all council members are present with one absence. General public comments, any public comments at this time? Seeing no one come forward, it gets us down to the consent calendar. There's a motion and a second. If there's any further discussion, please vote. Would you like to do a roll call, please?
Director Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Director Santangelo?
Yes.
Director Tremblay? And Chair Kildy?
Yes.
Any Board or Staff comments at this time for the Capital Improvement Corporation? Hearing none, will adjourn. With that, I'd like to call the Public Finance Authority Regular Meeting for January 22nd to order, and let the record reflect that all council members are present with one absence. Any public comments for the Finance Authority? Seeing none, we'll get down to the consent calendar items.
I can second.
There's a motion and a second. There's no further discussion, please have a roll call vote, please.
Director Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Director Santangelo?
Yes.
Director Tremblay?
Yeah.
And Chair Kildy?
Yes.
Any staff or Board comments at this time for the Public Finance Authority? Hearing none, will adjourn. With that, I'd like to call the Camrio Community Development Commission Regular Meeting for January 22nd, 2025, to order. Let the record reflect that all council members are here with one absence. And that'll get us down to general public comments. Any general public comments tonight on the Camrio Community Development Commission? Hearing none, let's get down to the consent item, which is two items.
I'll move consent.
There's a motion and a second. Any further comment? Please have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Commissioner Santangelo?
Yes.
Commissioner Tremblay?
Yeah.
And Chair Kildy?
Yes.
Any commission staff or comments or reports at this particular time? Hearing none, we stand adjourned.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the Camrio Board of Library Okay, I'd like to call to order the Camrio Board of Library Trustees Regular Meeting for Wednesday, January 22nd. And let the record reflect that all council members are present with exception of one absence. And do we have any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, we will move forward to General Public Comments. Is there anyone who wishes to address the Library Board at this time? Okay, seeing no one, we will go ahead and move to the Consent Calendar, which is our Library Board Minutes. Can we get a motion in a second?
I'll move the approval of that.
We have a motion and?
A second.
Second. City Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Trustee Kildy?
Yes.
Trustee Tremblay? President Pro Tem Santangelo?
Yes.
And President Martinez Bravo?
Yes. And that moves four to zero. And we will move to our discussion item, which is the Library Activity Updates. And do we have a staff report on that?
Yes. Good evening, President Martinez Bravo and Library Trustees. Camrio Public Library is a recipient of the California State Library Parks Pass Grant, which encourages community members to connect with nature and enjoy outdoor activities. Since 2022, the library has offered parks passes and hiking backpacks for library cardholders. In the past year, the backpacks have circulated over 148 times. Due to the backpack's popularity, the library was given two stargazing kits by the Southern California Library Cooperative. If I could have this slide open. Earlier this month, the library offered these stargazing kits for checkout. Each stargazing kit includes a telescope, carrying bag, portable stool, compass, flashlight, a night sky field guide, and a moon field guide. We invite you to check out the backpacks and stargazing kits in the future, particularly when the air quality improves. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to address any questions.
Thank you so much, Mandy. Are there any questions for our library staff? Okay, any comments?
Comment.
Yes, mayor.
This library looks great. Yeah, I'm so proud of it and how it's been kept up and the job that you're doing. And if you could pass that along to the employees and patrons there, it looks really, really good.
Thank you very much, mayor. And thank you, Mandy, for your report. And as always, thank you for your good work.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. And do we have, we'll move on to Board and Staff Comments. Do we have any comments from the Board? Seeing none, we will go ahead and adjourn this meeting.
I'll call this meeting of the Camrio Sanitary District to order. Are there any, let the record reflect that four directors are present. Director Tennyson is absent this evening. Are there any public comments for the Sanitary District? Seeing none. Do I have a motion on Consent Calendar Items A and B?
I'll move.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the law.
Director Kildy?
Yes.
Director Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Director Santangelo?
Yes.
And Chair Tremblay?
Yes. There are no discussion items. Are there any Board or Staff comments or reports?
No.
Seeing none, we'll adjourn this meeting of the Sanitary District.
With that, I'd like to call to order the Successor Agency Special Leading Meeting for January 22nd. Let the record reflect that all participants are here with one acceptance. And I'm going to ask for any general public comments at this particular time. No public comments there, so we'll get down to the Consent Calendar Items, which is two.
Move Consent.
Second.
Get that?
Tie went to the runner.
Pastor Mayor said tie goes to the runner? Did you get that? You gave the second? Okay. With that, if you please do a voice roll call, please.
Councilmember Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Councilmember Santangelo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tremblay?
Yes.
And Mayor Kildy?
Yes.
At this time, any Board or Staff Comments and Reports on the Successor Agency?
No.
Hearing none, we will adjourn. With that, I'm going to reconvene the Camrio City Council Meeting for January 22nd. And let the record reflect that all the council members are here with one absence. With that, we're going to get down to the Approval Agenda and the Presentations, which is very, very special tonight. The first presentation, actually the only presentation tonight, and it should only be the only one, is the California Water Environmental Association, CWEA, Tri Counties Award Collection System of the Year. And at this time, I'm going to ask Darren Carter if he would join me, please, up at the front here. And any Staff members that would like to come up with an, well?
Good eye, Rachel.
Can you hear me? Okay. All right, this is a wonderful, wonderful evening here for the city of Camrio and all of the city of Camrio residents that use your services, let me tell you. So I usually don't read this, but I'm going to read this verbatim because I think it is so meaningful. Tonight, we are proud to announce the Camrio Sanitary District has been recognized by the Tri-County Section of the California Water Environment Association with the 2024 Collection System of the Year. Yes. It was wonderful. Amazing. This is a competitive award and is presented to the most outstanding sanitary collection system department from Santa Barbara to San Luis Obispo and Ventura County area. Congratulations. Thank you, thank you, thank you for all the residents in Camrio that you do such a great job. So with that, Darren Carter is here, who's our Water Reclamation Superintendent. And he's here with our outstanding crew and all the employees that make this happen. And I want to turn this over to Darren to kind of talk a little bit about his remarks. And we're very, very proud of all of you. And it's an honor and a privilege for myself and all of the council members that serve on the Sanitary Board to congratulate all you. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Darren.
Thank you, Mayor Kildy, and members of the Camrio Sanitary District Board. Each day, the Collection System staff is faced with various challenges. Whether it's working in a busy intersection or doing a closed-circuit video of a hard-to-reach sewer line, these gentlemen are out there to protect the residents here in the city of Camrio. Now, the Camrio Sanitary District Collection Staff is a group of staff members that you might see driving around the city in our city logo videos. And a lot of times, residents want to know what they are doing. Well, what they are doing is protecting the assets that the city has given us to make sure that sewage is something that is not seen. And they're making sure that that collection system is taken care of in a good way. So the award that was presented this evening is a testament to the hard work of these gentlemen before us. Now, this award would not have been possible without the support of many people from within the city. This is a city award. So we'd like to thank the Sanitary District Board, the City Manager's Office, the Engineering and Capital Improvement Groups, our Public Works Department, and all other city departments that have contributed to us getting this award. But I'd like to introduce the individuals that are on the front line of our collection system. Our collection system is led by Mr. Dave Barger, who's our lead collection system mechanic. Whenever there's a need for something from a resident, if Dave is on duty, Dave is the one that will be our first call to make sure that he can get out there or have one of his staff members to go out to take care of the issue. We also have Mr. Roy Gaines. Roy has been with the city of Camrio for over 20 years and has intimate knowledge of our collection system. Whenever we have computer issues or something that goes on with our computer system, we look to several individuals. We look to Mr. Jaime Rivera, who has been with the city for many years as well, working in our collection system. We have two other individuals that are part of this team, Mr. Ruben Vasquez and Mr. Mario Jimenez. And this is our collection system staff that is there. So we want to say thank you to the city for acknowledging this award and for the great assets and tools that you give us to protect the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you very much. I am so excited about this. I love sand issues. I just think they're just terrific. And I'm so proud of all of you and your staff and Darren, what you do, and past directors and past employees that have made this possible. But with this, don't sit down. I'm going to ask any of my esteemed colleagues here from the Sand District and council members if they'd like to make any comments at this particular point. Would any of you like to make, we'll start with Ms. Martita.
Thank you, mayor. Yes, first and foremost, many congratulations and thank you for your hard work and dedication. I took a field trip when I was elected, and that was an interesting field trip, to say the least. But I know, and I can imagine how hard and so much work that goes into 24/7 because you're monitoring these systems 24/7. And the city is definitely so grateful for everything that you do. We would have a real hard time if we wouldn't be able to flush our toilets. And so I'm, you know, it's something that sounds so simple, but it's so critical and it's so important. And it is a public safety issue. And so I am extremely grateful. My family is grateful. And many congratulations and thank you so much for your good work.
Thank you. Susan Santangelo. Susan.
Thank you, mayor. You really, Martita said it really well, but you really are sort of the unseen heroes behind the scenes that are keeping us able to flush the toilets. And a lot of people don't think that it's the most exciting thing happening in the city, but it is one of the most important things happening. And so I really, really want to tell you how grateful I am for your hard work. Congratulations on this award and keep up the good work.
Tony, Mr. Tremblay?
Thank you. So as an attorney representing sanitary districts in Ventura and Santa Barbara counties for 40 years, I know the hard work that you put into this. This is a significant award, and I want to make sure that people who are seeing this on television or on live stream know how significant this award is. Martita's correct. It's a public safety issue. And Susan, both of them were quite correct, and Kevin, you were correct in your statements. And aside from being a public safety issue, it is also an environmental issue as well. It takes hard work to get to the level of effort and to get to this kind of significant award. And it also takes very, very high level of effort and a lot of hard work. And it's, you know, we don't, we take for granted, you know, we take for granted flushing the toilet and where that material is going to go. We take for granted when we turn on our water and we have clean water coming out of the tap. And it's because of people like you that we are able to do that, and we shouldn't take it for granted. We should acknowledge and recognize the people that make that happen, and that's you guys. So thank you so much for everything you do, and this is a significant award. So congratulations.
Thank you. Anyone else, any other staff or anybody that would like to make any comments at this time? All right, so with that, I want to thank everybody here. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Thank you for being here. It made my night. Thank you for being here. Thank you for the, thank you, thank you, thank you. Enjoy. That was fun.
Thank you.
All right, so this is a time for General Public Comments. I do have three cards, and I'm going to call them in as I receive them. So the first, Mr. David Gilbertson. Is David here tonight? And let me make sure the microphone is on. Is it on there?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
We're good?
Thank you, David.
I wonder, I might want to take four minutes if possible. I live close to a pump station where my home is. These guys are my heroes that just left. Because I am glad the toilets flush.
Yes.
Okay. Mayor Kildy, city council members, staff. I want to thank you for your public service. As a former municipal employee, I know the hard work you have. You make many important, challenging decisions, but those decisions affect all of the residents. And I have special thanks for our firefighters, for our police, and all the first responders for keeping us safe. But here's a skunk on the table. The detrimental impacts of climate change are becoming more and more unavoidable day after day in our communities and across the world. I'm concerned about what kind of world we will leave our children and grandchildren. A recent op-ed from some youth was in the Ventura County Star. We need to take heed to what they said. In Ventura County, we are witnessing the stark reality of climate change in real time. Look outside. The impacts are no longer minimal and distant. They are devastating and immediate. We need to be reminded, need we be reminded of the devastating toll these costly wildfires are taking on our region. It is not sustainable. Ventura County youth are advocating for a future free of fossil fuels and their pollution. I ask the council to unanimously support their climate resolution to phase out oil and gas already passed by the city of Oxnard and Ohio councils. Question for you. When will the public receive a progress report on Camrio's climate action plan? Periodic updates are needed to inform the public on what progress is being made to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. All cities in Ventura County need to collaboratively work together and aggressively take action on reducing greenhouse gas emissions. Now, as the Camrio City Council and staff develop their budget for the upcoming year, are you prioritizing the city's goals and the work plans of these fine employees to take action on reducing greenhouse gas emissions? Is Camrio actively pursuing new opportunities for clean energy job creation and economic development? Does Camrio have staff whose work is dedicated to applying for federal and state grant funding? Lastly, we must not abdicate our responsibility to our community and to our children. It is essential we meet the challenges of transitioning to a clean energy future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, next is Charlotte Craven.
Charlotte Craven, I am a Camrio resident. At your December meeting, I was here for one reason and saw a map and came up and told you that it was wrong. Well, when I checked into it, it turned out I was wrong because I confused the Camrio Commons map with the redevelopment map. What I was particularly talking about was the Ramir Street area and the Camrio Commons Plan, which will be coming back to you, as Mr. Sanchez said several times. But since I'm here clarifying what I said before, I thought I'd take the opportunity to talk a little bit about the Ramir Street area. It covers Ramir Street, part of Daly Drive and part of Mobile. There are about 50 properties, 101 rental units, because the area housing authority has one triplex, the rest are duplexes. And I believe there are 40 different owners. The consultants often come to you with something they want to look really pretty with a little bow on top. to look really pretty with a little bow on top. They want it to all look together and nice. And so, when you're talking about this in the future, remember, you're talking about 40 property owners. You're not going to have one person who's going to make everything look alike. You also do no longer have eminent domain in your toolbox so that you can take all these properties. The advantage of having the property owners is that if you are realistic, and what I'm really asking is that this plan for that part of it be realistic. When you get to the parking, it says it should be underground parking or from the back. Let me tell you, either one of those are going to be an automatic turnoff. Nobody's going to put underground parking for a triplex or a duplex. They can't afford it. They're not going to take up part of their property. So, what's going to happen? Absolutely nothing, just as it has in the, in the past. If you'll be realistic, maybe think outside the box, even go to carports. Don't allow people to put all their stuff piled up in the carports. Have little containers. People will then park in their carports. They won't have garages filled with stuff, and part of the parking problem on the street will be solved. I think there are lots of different ways you can think outside the box for this area. And I'll be talking to you again and again and again as this comes. But I, I hope you're realistic in what you finally approve for that housing area. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, next is Meryl. Here, there she is. Welcome.
Hi. Hello, Camarillo City Council. Errol Bergy. I'm sure that you have all been glued to your watch duty app that shows the Grimes Hughes Fire extending into Ventura County, how fires have no boundaries. The Mountain Fire came within a quarter mile of my home. I looked up on the hills and saw the houses burning. Like fire, climate change has no boundaries. And no matter where we live, we need to do all we can to prioritize our resiliency in this critical point in time. You spent many hours, and your departments inputted many suggestions for your master sustainability plan, which includes a climate action plan. And there are lots of line items that were put in there, and the concern is that will be put on the shelf. And unless we have some kind of an accountability, a progress report perhaps on an annual basis of what we are achieving in that plan, would be a huge comfort and help to the community, to know that we're moving forward on this plan that you have invested so much time in. And which is so important that we do, of course, right here and right now, and on our own, in our own backyard, in our own local locale, do what we can to address the, the crisis of this moment, which we have been impacted in particularly by as, as a community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I do not have any other cards or anybody else from the public like to come up and make any public comments at this particular time? All right. That's going to get us down to council and staff comment and reports. Who would like to start out tonight? Do you want to start?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just in terms of meetings attended, while we, since our other meeting was cut short, I'll just have to go from December 12 on. A desalter tour with the governor's office staff on December 12. On December 13, Fox Canyon Special Board Meeting. And that had some significance, because we were voting on the update for the Pleasant Valley and Oxnard Subbasins, and on the report to file, reports to file with Department of Water Resources. On December 14, we had the Camarillo Christmas Parade, which was a great parade. Thank you to PVRPD and everybody who made that happen. On December 16, I had a CASA Executive Committee Meeting. CASA is the California Association of Sanitation Agencies. You saw that example here tonight with our great collection system crew. On December 18, Utilities Committee and another CASA Board Meeting. On January 7, we had interviews of prospective consultants for our city infrastructure strategic financial plan, and also a CASA Executive Committee Meeting on the 7. On the 8, we had a city council meeting, which was cut short. January 9, Camarillo Airport Authority with Councilmember Santangelo. On January 10, Ventura County Transportation Commission. On January 15, Camarillo Sanitary District Special Meeting. January 16, additional interviews in addition to those on January 7. And then on earlier today, earlier this afternoon, a meeting of the Fox Canyon GMA Board. Two things. One is, I would ask that you please keep all of our Los Angeles neighbors and those who were affected by Palisades and the Eaton Fire, and all the fires, including tonight or today, the Hughes Fire, in your thoughts and prayers, and for, for all of those who have been affected so markedly and tragically. Secondly, with respect to the Mountain Fire, there is a, and I believe people are aware of this, but just in case not, there has been a relief fund, a grant fund set up by the Ventura County Coastal Association of Realtors, based on a grant from the National Association of Realtors. And it, they have been doing a great deal of outreach. But for those who have been adversely impacted by the Mountain Fire, there is an application that they can file. The, the application deadline date is January 31 of this month, and it provides, out of this relief foundation, grant funds up to $1,000 for a number of things, including monthly mortgage expense for a primary residence that was damaged by the fire, rental costs due to displacement from the fire, hotel reimbursement due to displacement of their, from their primary residence for the Mountain Fire. The assistance is for housing relief only. So, if anybody has any questions, I know that staff has this information regarding the application. You can also look at the Ventura County Coastal Association of Realtors website. And again, the deadline for that is January 31. And that's it. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Susan Santangela.
Thank you. Okay. On December 12, I attended the CPA Executive Committee Meeting. December 14, I also attended the Christmas Parade. Up to January 9, I attended the Airport Authority. January 15, I attended LAFCO. January 15, we also had the Sanitary District Special Meeting. January 16, CPA Executive Committee. January 17, the Vons Grand Opening. And January 22, early this morning, we had Policy Committee. And that's all I've got.
Thank you, Mayor. So, December 13, I attended the Ventura Training Center Firefighter Academy Graduation. I am extremely thankful to our fighter fighters, and especially on that day where the individuals who are now serving our, our community were given a second chance. So, I really enjoyed that event. December 14, I also attended the Camarillo Christmas Parade. January 8, I attended the Finance Committee Meeting. January 16, I attended the Economic Development Collaborative Annual Meeting in the City of Oxnard. January 17, I attended the grand opening and ribbon cutting of the new Vons Shopping Center. And January 21, I attended the Southern California Edison. It was a meeting for elected officials. There was a lot of information, and I have been receiving multiple questions from our constituents regarding the process, safety. I've also received comments from our constituents, from the senior citizens, indicating that they had been having some issues just getting through to someone, like a live person. I did reach out to Southern California Edison, and they did confirm that there is actually a phone number out for the elderly population, and I can state it now, and if we can get it out through the Council of Aging and through our communications, it is 1-800-319-8765. Something else that I asked was, and I know right now, you know, we're, we've been in a constant state of fire, right, that the fire has just been going on throughout the year and even at the end of last year. And so, I know right now is a crisis time, but I think if we could direct staff to ask when they could, Southern California Edison could come to provide a presentation and maybe ask, ask and answer questions for our community, I think that would be extremely helpful. And I understand that right now is probably not the best time, but if we could put it on the calendar, I think that would really help our community members. January 22, I attended the Investment Committee Meeting with Mayor Kildee. And as mentioned, I know that this has been an extremely long fire season, and my heart also goes out to all impacted. We were extremely lucky in Ventura County in the sense that nobody was, nobody had passed away from, from the impact of the fires. But unfortunately, in Los Angeles, they continue to find bodies, which is just absolutely devastating. And with that, I did want to direct staff. I know that there were a couple of public comments about climate change. And I did want to direct staff to, and I know staff has been working on both the Climate Action Plan and the Master Sustainability Plan. So, if we can direct staff to maybe bring that to the committee level and to get an update, and then bring it to council, I think that would be extremely helpful for all of us. Yes. Okay. Wonderful. Thank you, and that's all I have.
All right. So, December 14, I did attend the Christmas Parade. Saturday, January 11, I attended a coffee and conversation with Assembly Member Steve Bennett. And if anybody ever gets an opportunity to go to one of those, I highly encourage you to do that. Thursday, January 16, I had a VRSD Board Meeting. Also, that same day, Thursday, January 16, I was able to go to the Vons Pre-Opening. And I was able to attend with all of my colleagues here, the Vons Grand Ceremony and Opening Ribbon Cutting for Friday, January 17. And it is stunning. If you get a chance to go in there, go into the Vons, I don't mean to plug certain businesses, but this is really a great addition to our city. And the remarks that I made on the grand opening day, I can remember in 1964, when the first Vons came to Camarillo, when I was eight years old. And my dad came home and told my mom, Barbara, he said, "Jay Barbara, jeez, I got to tell you." He says, "We've got a new grocer come to town, Vons." And I'm super excited. And my mom looked at him and said, "Well, that's great, Bob. What's a Vons?" We didn't know what Vons was. We didn't have anything like that. Well, this is, this is special. And I'm just so happy, along with all of my colleagues and our community, that, that Vons believes in our community. We have a 60-year relationship with Vons here. So, I wanted to get that, I wanted to say a few comments on that. Tuesday, yesterday, I did coffee with a cop, and I really appreciate those. If you get a chance to attend one of those, it's well worth it here. And as was said, today, I had an Investment Committee Meeting with the Councilmember Martinez Bravo. So, again, heartfelt about our first responders, and they have been really put to the test. I've lived in California my whole life. I don't ever remember quite something like this. It may have happened, but they've really been put to a test, and they've really come through. And it's a testimony to their training, their support, and all the first responders, including teachers, by the way, too. There's considered first responders as well. And all the public that comes together in a time like this, we need, we need everybody. All right. So, with that, we are going to get down to the consent calendars.
I can second.
There's a motion and a second for consent. Please do a roll call, vote on that.
Councilmember Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Councilmember Santangela?
Yes.
Councilmember Tremblay?
Yes.
And Mayor Kildee?
Yes. Okay. So, that is going to get us down to the first discussion items, and it's the Camarillo Homeless Strategic Plan Update. Do we have a staff reporter?
Yes.
Thank you. I keep looking to the, this, I used to look into the left here. I got to remind myself, look to the right. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Lisette Torres. I'm a Senior Management Analyst in the City Manager's Office. And I'm here to bring you a brief update on where we are with our homelessness strategic plan, which kicked off in October of last year. So, here is the agenda. We're going to walk you through who the project team is, talk about the key priorities that the project team identified, talk about our scope of work and the quantitative analysis we're doing in the, as a part of the development of the plan, walk you through who our stakeholders are and how we're engaging them, our timeline, next steps, and of course, we'll be available for questions at the end. So, I want to begin by just introducing who our project team is. As you can see, this team, which consists of about 13 individuals, meets on a weekly basis and consists of representatives from across city departments, including the City Manager's Office, Community Development, Public Works. Also includes members from Ventura County Sheriff's Office and Project Hope, our partners at the Ventura County Behavioral Health and the Healthcare Agency. It also includes two members with lived experience. So, these are individuals who are either formerly homeless or currently experiencing homelessness here in the city. And then, we also have the Homeless Solutions Team with our consultants, Listar Development Consultants. And Colleen Murphy represents that team. She's here with me to present, and will come up in just a couple of slides here. So, when we kicked off the plan, the project team met and reviewed the direction provided by the city council regarding what would be important to have in this plan, and we identified a set of priorities to help launch the planning process. And I want to highlight just a few of them here on this list. The team really felt that it was important that the plan is actionable, so something that could realistically be implemented, that had realistic timelines and goals. The plan also prioritized both diverse housing, meaning different levels of housing. What we've learned in working with homeless individuals is that their needs vary, and some individuals, you know, really need some of those short-term options for housing to help stabilize themselves. Others need some long-term opportunities that they just, you know, have not been able to acquire. We also prioritize comprehensive services. We know that housing alone does not solve homelessness, so it's really those wraparound services, the case management, the substance abuse services, the behavioral health services, that really help to, help people get to the point where they can be sustainable for the long run. We prioritize having a funding plan and identifying funding sources outside of the city's general plan, general fund, including grants and other opportunities coming at all levels, from the state to the federal government. Prevention, this is an area of opportunity for our plan that we felt was very important, really focusing on keeping people housed and addressing those barriers that people face in housing insecurity. Community engagement is a big part of the plan. We'll walk you through some of the mechanisms we're using to gather community feedback, but this is really a sort of a key priority here. Communication. So, we prioritize having a strong communication plan that we can communicate out to the community and be transparent in how this plan is developing and what strategies will, it will include. And then finally, data and outcome measures were identified as a key priority by the project team. These are metrics, well-defined metrics, benchmarks, that will allow us to track, track our that will allow us to track our progress and identify opportunities for refining our approaches. Next, I want to introduce Colleen, who is going to walk you through the scope of work for the plan.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Colleen Murphy. I'm a principal with the Lissar Development Consultants. We are a Southern California-based consultancy that focuses exclusively on homelessness and housing. We have a team not only in Southern California, but throughout the country. I'm lucky to be your neighbor up in Santa Barbara, so it's always an honor to do work in my extended community. We've been working for a few months now on supporting your city and developing the most robust homeless plan that really addresses your needs both today and tomorrow. And so we'll take you through a little bit about some of the features of the scope of work and then take you through some of the timelines. So of course, we have a strong project management component working with your project team. I cannot speak more highly about your project team. They have been incredibly engaged, even during times of crisis, during the wildfires, they were still pushing this work forward. So really, I can't speak highly enough about them. And really thinking through, how do we coordinate and collaborate in times of crisis and to really make sure you're getting what you need. Data is really important. Data tells the story of where you're at today and where you'd like to go. And so our data collection is both qualitative and quantitative. It's really important to hear directly from the communities. We have administered a community survey that actually is up right now to get as much feedback as possible. We've also hosted in-person community input sessions, and we'll be doing one in the future. We're also doing some quantitative analysis, which I'll talk about in a moment, and then also engaging key informants throughout your community from different sectors. And then finally, this will all culminate into a robust background report. And so, once we've compiled all of those data elements and feedback, we'll start drafting it and then working really closely with your community to then develop what those goals are and what those strategies should be, and then ultimately draft your plan. There'll be opportunities for feedback along the way, as you can see here, to make sure that it's done just, just right. And then by the end, towards the end of the year, we hope that we will finalize this plan and then have an opportunity to share broadly with the community. And so when we talk about quantitative data that we'll be working through, this is the work around homelessness that is happening through your great service providers. So we'll be looking at your performance metrics that are utilized for homeless systems. We'll be looking at service utilization rates, so that means how many people are undertaking your services, estimating costs for interventions, looking at your budgets. We'll be looking at your housing element. We'll be looking at last year's point-in-time count. I know some of you may be tired, because I understand you had your homeless count this morning at 5:00 a.m., so congratulations on completing that. And then finally, looking at data that exists within your homeless management information system as well as any other database used by your providers. Hearing from your community, homelessness plans need to be really an inclusive project to get as many stakeholders' inputs and ideas, challenges and opportunities. This includes elected officials, city department staff, county and regional partners, homeless service providers, supportive service providers, the public sector, those who are providing upstream services, and of course, the general public and people with lived experience. And so, again, we want to have as many methods, because we know one method doesn't work for all. People are working a lot. It's hard to come for an in-person session, so we want to make sure we're doing that. So we're doing interviews, we're doing virtual focus groups. As I mentioned, we have the community survey out there. We're doing in-person community input sessions. And then we're also supporting the city who are doing surveys of people with lived experience through Project Hope and other partners. And so we already embarked on our first community input session, which was incredibly well-attended. And we saw more than 40 people attending, and we had a strong component of people who are experiencing homelessness here in Camarillo. And so we had three table topics to explore, ideas around homelessness prevention, homeless services in general, and then looking at both shelters and permanent housing. And so really, the goals were to get a sense of where are their strengths, which there are many, where there are unmet needs and areas where the city can go, and then understand potential solutions, including those that are outside the box. And so, as Lisette mentioned, that we've started this project in October, and we're in the data collection and quantitative analysis phase of this. And so we aim to finish that in February and to start then to developing those goals and strategies, and then go ahead and do, you know, start drafting that plan, do a little bit more community engagement, and then ultimately have that goalpost of September 25th to finalize and ratify your plan. And so what's up next? So we do have a community survey, which I believe is on your website and is also on your social media. So we, we invite everyone who has not participated in that community survey to do so. I know the city would appreciate your, your feedback. There will be stakeholder engagement interviews and focus groups, which we've already sent those invites out, and we'll be doing them over the next few weeks. And then we, the city then also conducted surveys with people with lived experience, I believe, last week, last week. So again, applaud you all for completing those. And now we will open to questions.
All right. Will any councilmembers have any questions or anything? Ms. Martinez Bravo?
Thank you very much for your presentation. And I know the point-in-time count was this morning. Do we have any numbers on that, updated numbers?
We, we don't have numbers quite yet, so the county will compile all of our data and provide us with the final report, probably in early spring. And so we can bring those to the council at that time.
Okay, thank you. And then the link, it looks like it's still open until the end of this month?
The end of the month, yes. The survey is still open.
And that's still on our website and our social media?
Yes, both.
Okay. And then can you, so there is a lot of misinformation, sometimes on purpose disinformation, circulating, surrounding this issue. But can you briefly speak to the community about the population? I know when I spoke to Deputy Jason Havelka, one of the concerns that had been brought to my attention was like, oh, or not even a concern. I think it's just people that were not informed, thinking that a lot of the people who are homeless here in the city of Camarillo are not from the city, but he mentioned that truly the majority are from the city and have been a part of this community. So can you just speak a little bit to the population that we have here?
Sure. So, yes, the majority of the homeless population in Camarillo, you know, our situation here is actually kind of unique. The majority of our population, they reside in their vehicles or their RVs, and many of them are employed or, you know, have some sort of an income, and they just can't make ends meet or, you know, find it hard to obtain housing here in the city of Camarillo. It's just not affordable to them, and they need, you know, those, those subsidies a lot of the times. But, you know, that is very much what we encounter, people who are working, who are just trying to make ends meet. We have, you know, a lot of seniors who are living in their RVs or vehicles. So that's pretty much the population. You're not going to find a lot of people really sleeping in encampments on the streets or tents or things like that. We just don't see that. We have people who are sheltering themselves in some other way. So they very much blend into the community. They have gym memberships, just like a lot of people do. They will use the gym to work out and shower. They're shopping in the same grocery store. So they very much, you know, blend in to our community. So it's really oftentimes hard to, you know, even spot when somebody is homeless or contributing in a lot of the ways that, you know, many of the rest of us are.
Yeah, thank you. And I know when I joined you for Backpack Medicine last year, I believe it was, we also encountered U.S. veterans who were also a part of this population, and it was so important to offer them even additional services, right?
Yes, we, we don't have a ton of veterans, and that's because we've been successful at being able to house them. There is a lot of housing available to veterans right now in the county, and so we, Project Hope very much takes advantage of those opportunities and makes those connections. I think last year, we were able to house two veterans. And so that is something that we really do prioritize.
Thank you so much. And I know this is a receive and file. I do have just a comment, but I can wait till questions are asked. Thank you.
I'll make a comment before that. There's been some comments in the public that we're not doing enough, perhaps. And that's somewhat of a fair comment, but I want to also say that we are doing quite a lot. And this council and previous councils that I've sat on are very much in tune with the issue here and want to do the best that we can do to try to help this situation. This is a very complex, very emotional, very difficult situation, because there's so many different reasons for why people find themselves in the situation that they find themselves in. But my suggestion is, after this report is completed, to go public with it in the strongest ways we can. Make sure that we talk up what we are doing. You can always do more, but it will never be from a lack of effort on this particular city council. We're going to do as much as we can do within the realms of this. So I want to make that, that comment. And I'm going to ask Councilmember Martinez Bravo, did you have some other comments and/or?
I do. I'm not sure if other councilmembers had any more, no questions. Okay, wonderful. Yeah, great. So December 5th, we received a letter from the coordinator from the Autism Society of Ventura County. And in that letter, there were some concerns about the people with disabilities not being included in the plan. I used to be a therapist for children with autism and pervasive developmental disorders. This is definitely a population that is near and dear to my heart. And we received another letter from that same organization. I think the letter just came in today, yes, Wednesday, January 22nd. And I just really wanted to thank you, because it sounds like, based on, on the letter here, that the, that you met with the organization, and the organization feels extremely comfortable with the plan that is in place, and they felt heard. And I think that really speaks to all of the work that is happening behind the scenes or, you know, happening not when we're meeting here. And I just wanted to, to state that, because I think that is really a testament of where this plan is going, engaging the community, answering questions, and really being inclusive of all people. And that's just the comment that I have. Thank you very much for that, for that work.
So we have some comments. If Angela would give.
Thank you. Ditto on that. I saw that letter come through, and so I wanted to thank you for being so responsive to, to that organization. Just a couple of comments. I'm really pleased to see such an emphasis on the wraparound services and the comprehensive nature of the services that we're trying to provide. I'm pleased to see the emphasis on prevention and the robust community engagement. I think that's really, it seems to me, we, we always struggle with this communication with the public. So the more we can engage and have a really, a good sharing of information, then the better. And then the final thing is just really pleased to see an emphasis on the data and outcome measures, that we can really see the progress we're making and have some real objective ways to measure what we're doing. So thank you.
I'm gonna see any comments. No. Okay, this is a receive and file, counselor. Should we get a motion to receive and file this, or can we? If you're lucky to do.
It just, you don't have to have a motion for that.
Okay. Thank you for all your comments, and thank you for the report, too. I'm really looking forward to this. I know it's a lot of work, but we, we appreciate your, your efforts. All right, so that gets us down to Q. It's the Restated Financial Agreement for Solid Waste Handling Service with E.J. Harrison and Sons and Company. And I'm going to ask for a staff report. There she is, right there. Monique, please.
Good evening, Mayor Kildee and members of the City Council. My name is Monique Martinez, and I'm a Senior Management Analyst with the City Manager's Office. And tonight, I'll be presenting on the amended and restated franchise agreement for solid waste handling services. I'd like to point out that we also do have the city's solid waste consultant here, Kim Nielsen of Solid Waste Solutions, and Danny Harrison, our E.J. Harrison Contract Manager, and Phil Campos, our E.J. Harrison Controller. To provide you with a little bit of background information, the city's initial contracted term with E.J. Harrison and Sons was effective August 1st, 2014, through June 30th, 2024. This included a, this included three five-year extensions, with the first extension based on performance, and the second and third extension at the city's sole discretion. In addition, on February 22nd, 2023, the city approved the first extension, extending the term through June 30th, 2029. The current restated agreement, as proposed, operates as the first extension to the initial agreement. On November 12th, 2021, the city also adopted Ordinance 1184, which is in compliance with state mandates for SB 1383, Organics Waste Reduction Programs. City staff worked with the city attorney and our solid waste consultant to prepare the draft restated franchise agreement. We also met with the Utilities Committee and incorporated the input and feedback received from the committee. And the purpose of tonight's restated agreement is meant to consolidate existing contract amendments, update outdated and obsolete provisions, clarify the contractor's roles and responsibilities, modify service levels to enhance services based on the community needs, and also incorporate the negotiated terms agreed upon, the city and the contractor. The proposed restated agreement includes a contracted term that's valid through June 30th, 2029. It also includes two five-year extensions, with the first extension contingent upon performance, and the second extension granted at the city's sole discretion. The city also updated default and breach provisions, and specifically, I'd like to highlight its Articles 19 through 21, which include, included some additional language that protects the city. It also clearly outlines the administrative remedies process. And we also updated Exhibit A to include some administrative remedies definitions. One of the key performance amendments that was made is our CPI increase. The increase now increases from 80% to 100%, which is capped out at 4% maximum. To clarify, a CPI amendment is calculated by computing the average percentage over 12 months ending in February. This means that the contractor is only eligible to receive the maximum rate not to exceed 4%. If the CPI is under 4%, then that's the rate that they would receive. CPI rates are set by the Bureau of Labor Statistics, and they're used to calculate the cost of living adjustments for goods and services paid for by consumers. CPI does not include tipping fees related to landfill or waste disposal rates. Staff considered several factors, which included impacts to operational costs to provide services, state-mended recycling programs, specifically to highlight SB 1383, which sets a specific criteria for local infrastructure's processing facilities. We also analyzed competitive rates, and that included a comprehensive review conducted by our solid waste consultant, Solid Waste Solutions. And in that assessment, we reviewed the five largest cities in the county for comparable rates to ensure that we were receiving rates that do not exceed the average comparable rates. To highlight a summary of the CPI rates, the table here does demonstrate exactly what those rates look like. The eligible CPI rate at 100%, the CPI max at 80%, and the five prior CPI increases as they have been adjusted. I'd like to highlight- I'd like to highlight that tipping fees refers to charges assessed by landfills, transfer stations, or waste processing facilities for disposal of solid waste. For fiscal year 2024, 2025, the residential rate adjustment increased to 9.17%. However, nearly 6% was attributed to tipping fees alone, while 3% was for the contractors' approved CPI increase. The contractor had not received any CPI increases since 2021. To provide an overview of some additional key amendments, we modified services to align with our SB 1383 Organics Program. We continue to work with the contractor to provide a robust organics program. This is a state mandate which CalRecycle set a new bin color structure, which our contractor is currently implementing. The CalRecycle deadline is set to be completed by January 1st, 2036. However, our contractor has a very aggressive approach and has a target projected goal to complete these bin exchanges in 2026. The city also, the city's goal is also to expand our organics program, and new provisions were added to include the delivery of free mulch for the city and residents' use for community events. This will be a part of our expansion to provide free services for organics material to our residents. In addition, we were able to modify another key provision, which include bulky item collections. And this is specific to help eliminate illegal dumping, reduce curb side waste, and promotes aesthetic appeal. And overall, we were able to improve this service by adding two additional pickups for residential services, which includes a total of four collection services per year. And a new service that we are now adding is for multifamily dwellings. This was not previously an option, available option for multifamily dwellings. They will now be able to receive pickups based on 50% of the total units within the complex per year. At the recommendation of the Utilities Committee, we also conducted a survey with local HOAs. We did receive four feedback, four responses from local HOAs who expressed their and resident satisfaction with the current services and the communications that they're receiving to educate them on services. Some key customer service enhancements included transition of the residential customer service billing to EJ Harrison. Staff will work with EJ Harrison to complete this transition by June 30th, 2025. And this will allow for a more efficient and improved customer service experience. I'd like to point out that the city also expects to maintain a level of customer service oversight and management of these services as well. And as part of that, this will allow the city to retain a portion of the customer service fee revenue. Another key provision includes a restructuring of the service levels. We conducted an in-depth review with our solid waste consultant and the contractor to determine what best meets our community needs. And in doing so, we were able to determine that single-family dwellings now required a new minimum service level, which includes 196-gallon green organics waste bin. And this is in alignment with the city's current ordinance and the state mandates. We are now able to add a second level of standard services. The standard service level one now includes customers to receive a 164-gallon solid waste cart, which previously was set at 96 gallons. So this is modified to tailor the needs of each of our residents, if they require a smaller solid waste bin. Additionally, a new service is for multifamily dwellings and commercial premises. We are now mandating, again with SB 1383 requirements, organics bins. Upon the approval of the City Council, EJ Harrison will begin delivering bins to those impacted customers. Just to highlight a couple of community outreach and education resources that we are currently providing to our residents and businesses, we continue to work with EJ Harrison to enhance our communications and our educational resources. And just to highlight a few of the more popular resources that are requested by staff are the city's trash and recycling services rates guidelines, our annual trash and recycling schedule, and our odds and ends recycling guide. Included in that as well is EJ Harrison's commercial and residential trash backlash newsletter. And finally, for next steps, upon the approval of the council, we'll collaborate with EJ Harrison to conduct a comprehensive community outreach campaign to inform our residents and businesses about the changes in waste collection and recycling services and programs. And this communication will include direct communications to include educational materials, some public engagement initiatives, and also ensure that our customers overall understand the new services that are being provided to them. Staff recommends that the city, that the council authorize the city manager to execute Agreement Number 2014-59L for solid waste handling services with EJ Harrison and Sons. And that concludes my presentation. Staff, our consultant, and our solid waste caller are available to answer any questions.
Thank you for your presentation. Any questions of staff from council members at this particular point?
I have one or two questions. Just to confirm on the additional services, EJ Harrison offers, is it the pickup of five items a year?
So we did not set for bulky items a minimum of the, or each pickup. It's just set at a number of four pickups per year, for specific for residential services. So there is no set minimum, but once a customer contacts EJ Harrison directly, they'll determine the size. So if it's, you know, we're not necessarily going to allow for five or six refrigerators or sofas, larger items. And so they'll work with the contractor to determine that, so that way they can prepare their drivers to have the appropriate sized vehicle for collection.
Okay. And then for the steam cleaning of the bins, that is once a year?
That is correct, and that is free, and then it is available at an additional charge. There were no changes to that service.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions.
Anyone else have any questions here? So before we start the comments, anybody from the public like to come up and make a comment before we proceed from this? Seeing none, so we'll start with a council comment. So would anybody like to make a comment at this particular point? Mr. Tremblay?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first of all, thank you to our staff. Thank you to our consultant for excellent work. I'm pretty confident that city staff and the consultant will say that the Utilities Committee, which had, I think, five markup sessions for this agreement, very lengthy contracts, markups, that we spent a great deal of time on it. I also want to compliment EJ Harrison. The city receives excellent service from EJ Harrison, and I want to thank them for all of the work that they do for our community. The contract has been thoroughly vetted by the city attorney's office, by an attorney in our city attorney's firm, who specializes in these contracts. So I'm pleased to see that. We, one of the things to emphasize here is that this is an enterprise fund. The city runs this as an enterprise fund. And we have to maintain its viability. There have been a lot of increase, without asking you to go back on the PowerPoint, Monique, I won't do that. There have been a significant amount of state mandates in the last several years that have increased the costs to operators for their services. So if there's any question as to why to go from the 80% of CPI to 100% of the CPI, that is one of the reasons, because those costs, plus the labor costs for the operators, have, the trajectory has been very steeply increasing. And as the PowerPoint indicated, city residents are receiving increased service levels as a result of that. So you have that, and as the background to that, the annual CPI adjustments, as council knows, are limited to a maximum of 4%. So if there's an actual CPI increase of less than 4%, that annual increase would be less than 4%. But if conversely, let's say that the annual CPI increase is calculated in the contract were at 6%, God forbid, or 7% or 8%, it's still capped at a maximum of 4%, which is a protective device for our ratepayers. Council knows we did receive one letter from someone who had expressed concerns about the agreement. I will say, having worked at length on this contract together with the mayor, that there were several mischaracterizations and statements in that, in that letter. And so I'm not going to take the time to go through those. I think we have a good agreement. I think staff and our consultant have spent a lot of time on it. And I'm happy to support it and make the motion, make the recommended motion at the appropriate time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other, Ms. Martinez?
Thank you, Mayor, and I also agree with what Councilmember Tremblay stated. I think staff and the consultant did a very thorough job and a very fair work in evaluating the entire process and allowing for there to be the fairness component for our constituents in our city. So I do have the full confidence in staff and your work to move this forward. This, I mean, this is a pretty big job. We're talking about really meeting state compliance, addressing all of those needs, in addition incorporating that into the costs. And so I think I'm very comfortable moving forward. And on a personal level, I was at a recent city where their trash cans were just so beat up. And I was like, well, aren't you going to get, can you just get a, you know, steam cleaning? Like, we have this in our city, and they didn't have that. And so I think that is also just part of the good customer service that EJ Harrison has. I've been on council for two years, and I know it hasn't been very long, but I am a sophomore now or going into my junior year. And I hear a lot of complaints about different issues. And this has never been one in terms of their customer service with EJ Harrison. And on a personal level, I can say the same. And when I have had an issue, I've called and they have addressed it pretty immediately. And I think it is a great company. It's important to hire local. For me, that is something that I also prioritize. And I'm also very comfortable to second that motion when that is made.
I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the Utilities Committee's, Utilities Committee work on this, staff and the consultants work on this. All of it, I think, really came to a good agreement. It's with a company that we know very well, and I think that the result is a really fair and workable agreement. So, thank you.
All right. I just want to make a couple comments. I want to thank my colleague, Mr. Tremblay, for all his knowledge and all his hard work on this. I want to thank staff, Monique and your staff, all the hard work. Too numerous to name here. I know this was a challenging situation, but this is one of the most important contracts that we have in the city, if not the most important contract. I want to thank the Harrison and the Harrison family for caring about Camarillo. I've been up here a while, and every time that I've had an issue, which is extremely where with trash, you are on it right away. It's a partnership here. That's the way I look at it. And a partnership only works if all the partners work together to make the partnership successful. And you folks do. You've been here since day one, and there's reasons for it. There's options out there. But what you do for the city, what you do for our residents, more importantly, is tremendous. And I can't say enough. So again, we worked really hard on this. I think this is one of the strongest contracts that we've got here. And again, I think it's due to a lot of people in this room here why we have this and forward with us today. But I will be happy to support it when the motion arrives. And Ms. Martinez Bravo, did you want to make that motion? Or we refer to you if you'd like to, or anybody else here?
Sure, sure, I can.
Go ahead, Martina.
I will go ahead and motion to, motion to pass staff's recommendations.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Councilmember San Angelo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tremblay?
Yes.
And Mayor Kildee?
Yes. That passes unanimously. Thank you again.
Thank you, Council. Thank you.
All right. That's going to get us down to item R. It's Amendment to the City Council Policy 4.01. It's procurement. Do we have a staff report on that?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm Mark Yerby, the Finance Director for the city. I have a few brief introductory comments. This item is to consider the amendments to the City Council's Policy 4.01 procurement.
Thank you.
And while, while this is a brief presentation, it was a very extensive process to get to this point. We started back in 2023 by hiring a consultant, an outside consultant who specialized in municipal operations to come in and review our processes. We had a completed report in February of 2024. And then we met with the Policy Committee in September, the first meeting to review the preliminary suggested revisions to the policy. We met again with the Policy Committee, taking their comments. We met again in October, October 29th, to review it a second time before we brought forward with the recommendations and the approval with the Policy Committee to tonight's meeting with the City Council for consideration of adopting the revisions to the policy. One of the overarching goals of procurement for any municipality is fiduciary responsibility. We're dealing with public funds, so we want to make sure we're getting the best possible product for the best possible price in general. Secondarily, we have council goals and objectives as the overarching goal. Under fiscal management, there is a goal of maintaining sound and conservative financial practices to ensure the fiscal sustainability of the city. And under that goal, there's, one of the objectives is to continue to identify and implement means and methods for streamlining internal and public-facing city operations. So keeping those goals and objectives in mind, Raina Robertson now, our Budget and Purchasing Manager, will walk you through some of the key recommended revisions to the policy.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I will be walking you through the survey results that was conducted by our consultant. And we looked at our neighboring cities to assess what their dollar thresholds are for various types of services and supplies that we need to purchase. So this slide here highlights the professional services contracts. That the key takeaway from this slide is the average dollar threshold for professional services contracts that can be approved under the city manager's threshold is $57,000, as it compares with the city's current process and dollar threshold of $30,000. In the next slide, we have conducted the same survey for supplies, equipment, and maintenance services. Here, the average threshold under the city manager's approval amongst all our neighboring agencies is $68,000. And the city's current practice is $30,000, up to $30,000 for city manager approval. In the next slide, we will look at on-call services contracts. These are contracts that are general in nature, that we would enter with consultants on an as-needed basis. We saw a mix of results from our neighboring cities. The smaller agencies don't practice the on-call service contracts. However, the agencies that do practice have a much higher dollar threshold for authorization by their city manager and city council. So with that, we, in the next slides, we will look at the recommendations that we're proposing to you tonight. Our current process for all purchases, including supplies, equipment, Our current process for all purchases, including supplies, equipment and services, we conducted in a three-tier system. The first tier requires department director approval for zero to five thousand dollars. Within this tier, we do not require solicitation to be conducted. The second tier, from five thousand to thirty thousand dollars, requires an informal solicitation and city manager approval. And in tier three, anything exceeding thirty thousand dollars would require a formal solicitation and city council approval. The new recommended update is to increase the dollar thresholds based on the survey we conducted. Tier one, zero to ten thousand dollars allows the department director to approve any purchases for supplies, equipment and services. Tier two recommendation is for purchases between ten thousand and fifty thousand dollars to be conducted through an informal solicitation and be approved by the city manager. And tier three is for all purchases exceeding fifty thousand dollars to be conducted via a formal solicitation and be approved by city council. The next tier we're proposing is for on-call contracts. We currently have a limit to the on-call contracts for up to sixty thousand dollars. Within the on-call contract, we then issue task orders, which are smaller mini-contracts with a specific scope that cannot exceed the amount of the on-call and cannot exceed the sixty thousand dollar threshold. These contracts currently are brought up to city council regardless of the dollar amount and are approved by city manager between the zero dollar up to the sixty thousand dollars. The recommended change here is that our on-call contracts have no limit. And where we will conduct the review is at the task order level, which is where we will have the defined scope of work for each type of service or purchase. The recommendation to council tonight is tier one, from zero to twenty five thousand dollars task orders to be approved by the department director with no further solicitation or price comparison. For tier two, twenty five thousand dollars up to, up to two hundred thousand dollars to be solicited via an informal solicitation and be brought to city manager for approval. Tier three, any task orders that exceed two hundred thousand dollars will need to be solicited through a formal solicitation and be brought back to council for formal approval. As a result of one of our committee meetings, it was recommended that we bring back to city council all task orders that exceed one hundred thousand dollars on a quarterly basis, as this is the new process that we're recommending and we would want you to be comfortable and be aware of these large contracts that exceed the one hundred thousand dollars. The next threshold is related to blanket purchase orders. Blanket purchase orders are similar to on-call contracts, but instead they're utilized for purchases of goods, supplies and equipment and not services. So very similar to the on-call, currently the department director has authority to approve up to five thousand dollars. Between five thousand dollars and thirty thousand, the city manager has authority to approve the blanket purchase order. Anything exceeding the thirty thousand dollars will be brought back to council for approval. As we know, our COVID impacts have, and inflation and cost increases have made the small purchases, the need to purchase smaller purchases, that would require an increase in these dollar thresholds. We don't have the same capacity in the existing dollar thresholds. Therefore, we're proposing that for tier one, up to twenty five thousand dollars, that the department director has the authority to approve these blanket purchase orders with no solicitation and use of cooperative or piggybacking agreements. Tier two, twenty five thousand and above will be for city man, up to two hundred thousand will be for city manager approval via an informal solicitation. And tier three, all purchases that exceed two hundred thousand will be conducted via formal solicitation and will be brought back to city council for approval. The, the goal here is to align these dollar limits with the inflationary cost increases and establish policies that follow best business practices as we can, as we recognize through the survey we conducted with our neighboring agencies and provide greater flexibility for procuring goods and services while maintaining processes that encourage competition and best prices for the city. Another major recommended change is the process of solicitation for professional services. Our current process is conduct, most solicitation for professional services are conducted via a request for qualification. This form of solicitation is very brief in the scope of work that's provided. And the vendor selection is solely based on qualifications only. There is no cost consideration as part of this process. And traditionally, the current practice is, this is not followed with a request for proposal. What that would allow is that the qualified vendor would prepare the scope of work. Then the scope of work is negotiated with the city staff and the consultant. Then the cost is negotiated only after the scope is agreed upon between the city and the consultant. The recommended change is that we move forward with solicitation of all professional services via a request for proposal. This will allow city staff to develop and work on establishing a very detailed scope of work as we're ready to procure these services. This request for proposal will also include the contract terms, the cost, the timeline of the project, and will conduct interviews for a final selection that will incorporate in the selection process competence, qualification, expertise, and most importantly, cost. This process is cumbersome. It's time consuming, but we feel that it will provide the best cost available to the city. If departments are not certain of the scope of work for the project and under any special circumstances, they would like to see who are qualified consultants that could provide services, they would be allowed to proceed with an RFQ or request for qualification. But all requests for qualification efforts must be followed by a request for proposal, which will then include the cost as part of that selection basis. So with that, we would like to ask for city council to adopt the amendment to Policy 4.01 procurement.
Okay. Thank you for the report. I know there's a, there's a lot to unpack here. Are there any questions at this particular time? Ms. Martinez Bravo, would you?
Yes. So the first question, if you wouldn't mind going back to the slide where it, there's a comparison with the other cities and other municipalities? Was there another one? Or I think it was, yes, okay. So, well, those two slides. So I guess my question is, when you are making comparisons to the other cities, they all have a, obviously they're different sizes, different population. Did, was that a variable that was incorporated to try to evaluate the population size? Or can you speak to how you got to, to those numbers?
Yeah.
Process wise?
Yes. There were different factors that were considered when we evaluated the results and how we incorporated them in our recommendation. Population size was one. The size of the budget was another one. And whether they're a full-service city or not was another consideration. So based on those, we also recognized the fact that even though these thresholds averaged sixty eight thousand dollars, a lot of these agencies had not updated their policy to reflect any cost increases or inflation impacts. So we were aware that there is a need for these dollar thresholds to increase regardless of the outcome of the survey.
Okay. Thank you. And then the other question, it was, if you move forward to the slide where it had the different tiers? Yes. So I, I just wanted to clarify. So you mentioned like for tier three for the on-call contracts, that after one hundred thousand dollars, it would come to council? Is it for approval or just as an update? Because I don't understand why it has two hundred thousand and above for that tier.
That was, that was requested as an informational item would be generated, would be submitted at that point, just to track how the new process is, is working.
Okay. So not for approval, but just as an update, I guess to council? Okay. Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Any other questions at this time? Any comments at this time? What do you have? Mr. Tremblay?
Just, just a few brief comments. I want to thank staff, Rena, Mark, finance staff for an excellent job. Thank my colleague, Councilmember Santangelo. I think we had two markup sessions on this one. And staff did a very thorough job. I'm, I'm satisfied that this is going to meet the goals that were articulated in the PowerPoint. So I'm ready to make a motion at the appropriate time for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments or anything? Yeah, the only comment I have is thank you staff and subcommittee for all of the work that you do on this. I know it had to be very cumbersome, but I think we've got a really, a good policy, hopefully, that came out of this and I'm, I'm confident that we do. So with that, I think it is time to make the motion.
I'll move to adopt the staff recommendation.
And I'm happy to second.
There's a motion and a second? Would you like to take a roll call, please?
Councilmember Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Councilmember Santangelo? Councilmember Tremblay? And Mayor Kilday?
Yes. If it's permissible with everybody, could we take like a 10-minute break here? Get back at about, about 6:47. How's that? We'll be back at 6:47. How's that sound? So with that, we're going to recess. City Council, back to order, please. And that gets us down to item S, which is an urgency ordinance of the City Council of the City of Camarillo, California, establish a moratorium on the issuance of any new permit, license, approval, and/or entitlements pertaining to the retail sale of beer and wine or off-site consumption. And we have a staff report, I believe. Paul, yeah? Please proceed.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, council members. So again, we're talking about a moratorium on the sale of beer and wine for off-site consumption citywide. The city's received and anticipates receiving additional requests for the sale of beer and wine for off-site consumption, including within areas of concentration. The sale of alcohol is currently regulated by the state's Business and Professions Codes, but that leaves a, the Business and Professions Code ensures that local authority to regulate its land use authority is not preempted by the Business and Professions Code. So we do have the ability to regulate. With respect to alcohol sales, the Camarillo Municipal Code has not been revisited in several years, and it's not adequate to address new applications. So for this reason, the municipal code may need updating. The proposed moratorium will allow staff time to get, to gather additional data and study the situation in order to determine if additional regulatory controls should be recommended to the City Council for consideration and to prepare draft amendments to the municipal code. The proposed moratorium would impose a 45-day moratorium on the issuance of any permits or other approvals for the sale of beer and wine for off-site consumption, and this would be citywide. To pass the moratorium, it requires a four or five supermajority. This initial ordinance will be in effect for 45 days, but council may extend the initial ordinance twice, once for 10 months and 15 days, and then a second time for one year. So for a total of two years, the moratorium could be in place. So staff's recommendation is that the council find that the proposed urgency ordinance is not subject to CEQA and review, CEQA review pursuant to section 15061b3 because it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility that the proposed urgency ordinance may have a significant effect on the environment. And two, waive further reading and adopt an urgency ordinance imposing a 45-day moratorium on the issuance of any permits or other approvals for the sale of beer or wine for off-site consumption citywide. And that ends my presentation.
Okay, at this time, are there any questions at this time? Yes, Mr. Councilmember Martinez Bravo?
I have just a quick question. When was the last time that it was reviewed?
There's been modifications that have been made, but, so it's really difficult to specify exactly when the ordinance, because there's not a specific ordinance that it directly relates to alcohol. Each zone has its own section of the ordinance, and at various times, other ordinances have been brought forward as necessary, but a complete review hasn't been done since the ordinance was actually written.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Are there any questions, any other questions? No, I do have a card. I'm going to call on Mr. AJ, I believe it's Ahern, up, please. AJ? And if you could keep it coming, it's three minutes, we'd appreciate it. Thank you. Go for 259 if I can. Is that on? You want to lift it up? Oh, yeah, there you go. Okay. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for taking the time to listen to my comment. I don't have a personal vested interest in the moratorium, but when I heard that it was being considered, something about it just struck a nerve for me. And I was hoping to get more information during the staff report on some of the reasons that are being cited as why the moratorium is necessary, but I didn't hear those. One thing that's noted is that there's an undue concentration of current onsite or off-site licenses throughout the city. But other than the measure that the ABC uses, which is predominantly based on census tracts and does not take traffic flow or community plant planning into consideration, I'm not sure where that oversaturation exists. Another concern with oversaturation is in cities where certain neighborhoods, there's been concern that more alcohol sales were placed into those neighborhoods, and that could have poor socioeconomic impacts on those neighborhoods and on different communities. I don't see that as being an issue here in the City of Camarillo, and we are very blessed that that is the case. Another note on the cause was potential health, safety, and welfare dangers. And I believe it even states that there is a current and immediate threat to the public health, safety, and welfare to the city, the city's residents. I haven't seen any justification that would lead to potentially up to a two-year moratorium. I think we all can read between the lines and see that this predominantly has to do with the recent approvals for, by the Planning Commission for gas station liquor sales. There's been a precedent, not written, but a precedent in the City of Camarillo that we do not have liquor sales at our gas stations, and that has obviously now been changed with the Vons Express, Arco, and 76 approvals. But in those notes, neither the police department nor the staff recommendations noted any existing and urgent dangers that are currently being felt by the citizens here in Camarillo. And as stated in the staff report, the Business and Profession Code is the governing document that specifically states that we cannot treat gas station service or convenience stores different than other retail locations when it comes to alcohol sales. I wrote a lot more than I have time for, but the last thing that I would note is doing a moratorium to this extent feels as if it's showing a distrust in the Planning Commission, which I do not believe is deserved or necessary, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. All right, so I am going to open this up for any comments that you might have and/or discussion. Start off with this, Mr. Tremblay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the reasons, I realize the PowerPoint was rather succinct and very summary, but there were specific reasons set forth in the staff report and for the reasons cited in the staff report. Those are persuasive to me, and I will support this urgency ordinance. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilmember Martinez Bravo?
And I will agree as well. I think just the fact that the ordinance has not been fully reviewed since its inception, I think is critical, and I am comfortable with moving this forward as well.
Any other comments? That's where Santangelo?
Ditto.
Ditto.
Keep it short.
Yes, and I, as we have a tradition here, I ditto those as well. So what's the will of the council?
I'll move recommendations one and two.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Councilmember Santangelo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tremblay?
Yes.
And Mayor Kildee?
Yes. All right, that's going to get us down to item T, which is adoption of building and safety fees. Do we have a staff report on this? Mr. Rebe? Taking that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, Mark Heriby, Finance Director. With the building and safety fees, sorry. This is a public hearing item. And as a little bit of background, in July of 1994, the city contracted with Charles Abbott and Associates for building and safety services. The building fees were last updated in 1996 and 2007. Current fees are based on the city's permit fee schedule and the International Code Council or ICC valuation table. The city hired NBS to conduct the comprehensive building and safety fee study. When we talk about fee study, sometimes referred to as a nexus study, it looks at the cost, actual cost of providing a service because we cannot charge a fee that is more than the service we're providing. And when we talk about setting fees, we usually talk about it in terms of cost recovery. How much of the cost are we looking to recover through the fee? And the City Council has a policy 3.01 that states that in most cases, we want to recover 100% or close to that when setting the fees. So the results of the fee study concluded that the current fees recover approximately 48% of the building and safety costs. What that means is the general fund then therefore subsidizes the remaining amount, or approximately $1.2 million. The fee study also identified a general plan maintenance fee that we do not have in place and a technology fee that we not have in place previously. The annual cost recovery potential for those two fees combined is estimated to be a little over $800,000 per fiscal year based on anticipated activity. In October, staff met with the Finance Committee to present the results of the fee study, and the Finance Committee, after discussion, recommended that the city implement the fees described in the study all at once. After considering an incremental or phased approach, the recommendation was to do the fees all at once. Now I'll turn it over to David Sench as the Community Development Director to continue.
Thank you, Mark. This item was also brought to the City Council for discussion at the December 11th, 2024 council meeting. And at that meeting, staff shared the results of the fee study, as well as the Finance Committee's support for moving to full cost recovery for the building fees. At that meeting, three concerns were expressed. The first one was, are there certain projects that should have a lower fee? The second was, when should the fees actually be effective and implemented? And the third was, should the fees be incrementally implemented? Since the Finance Committee had already weighed in on the third about incremental fees, staff took the other two questions to the Finance Committee for consideration. And on whether or not there were any projects that would require a lower fee, there was none identified or recommended by the Finance Committee at that time. And the second question was, in terms of implementation time or where a dividing line would occur, the Finance Committee was very supportive of the staff recommendation for the fees to be effective on July 1st, 2025. That would allow several months for any kind of in-process projects to be able to pull fees and not be surprised by any increases in fees, and would also allow staff to move forward and implement the fees with Open Gov implementation. And that actually concludes staff's presentation. The staff's recommendation is that the City Council adopt a resolution to approve the fee schedule as identified in the staff report. And I do want to add one additional piece, one correction to the fee schedule. Fee number 16 on exhibit F will need to be modified. So that's the photovoltaic or solar fee that is capped by the government code. The number that's in the resolution right now doesn't include the cap, so I'll just read the cap into the record real quickly. So for the residential fee, it's up to 15 kilowatts, would be $450. For each additional kilowatt over 15 kilowatts, it would be $15 per kilowatt. And then for the non-residential fee, be up to 50 kilowatts for $730, and each additional kilowatt from 51 kilowatts to 250,000, 250 kilowatts would be $7, and each additional kilowatt over 250 kilowatts would be $5. So, and I can share that text with the resolution, but thanks for letting me read that into the record. That concludes staff's presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions at this time? Questions? Okay. Any questions?
No.
All right, so this is the continuation of the public.
Mayor, just since this is officially a public hearing, just to call that opened the public hearing, and if there's any public comment.
I'll open the public hearing. I'm going to ask if there's any members of the public who'd like to make any comments at this particular time. Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to go back to the council members for any comments that they may have at this particular point. Mr. Tremblay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it, and thank you to staff for all of the hard work on this. Council will recall that back in December, when we initially discussed this, I raised concerns about, particularly about, first of all, conceptually, I'm supportive of the 100% cost recovery, and I appreciate what the Finance Committee recommendations have been, and I support the recommendation that this be done all at once rather than incrementally. But back in December, I was very concerned about having staff discuss or identify projects that ought to be at a lower threshold, in other words, not have 100% cost recovery. And I have an amendment to the resolution tonight that I would like to focus on. I'm going to hand down copies, and there's sufficient copies for members of the council and Rachel, and then I think one to go over to David, and I think I've got one to our city manager as well, and I know he can pass one on to our city clerk. I want to make an exception here relative to Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District, and I think there are good reasons to do so. I distinguish Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District from other public agencies and from nonprofits by, among other things, the sheer scope of projects that they have to bring to the city each year. My understanding is that there are somewhere between 12 to 15 projects that are coming just this year alone to council. And both in terms of the number of projects that are coming in and, in my view, the direct benefit to the community by virtue of those projects and in meeting our general plan goals. Interesting, we're a city that does not have our own recreation department. We are blessed to have, though, a special district with whom we work so closely and cooperatively. The, some of the fees that I think we, that the city would charge pursuant to this new rate schedule, which I think is, the rates themselves are justified, I think may become an impediment for Pleasant Valley Rec and Park to do those projects. And what I'm also concerned about is, I want to avoid a situation where we have, I think we may from time to time have, for example, nonprofits that are doing a project that come before us and say, hey, would you be willing to make an adjustment in fees? Or we may have other public agencies do the same thing, although I can't think of another public agency off the top of my head, other than Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District, that brings these number and scope. Park District, that brings these number and scope of projects to us. They are quite, in my view, distinguishable, and Pleasant Valley Rec and Park, that is. So what I propose that we do is that we provide a mechanism here whereby those fees that would be otherwise imposed under Exhibits F and G, we make a finding with respect to Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District, that those projects benefit our community. And to me, that's a no-brainer, particularly given the recreational, recreation facilities, and that we grant the city manager the discretion on, on consultation with the district to reduce or waive the respective fees for those projects. Now, there are going to be some projects where we have a building inspector, and we, we receive excellent service, services from Charles Abbott, where we have a building inspector that has to go out and, and review that project. I'm not talking about that. We should be able to recover our fees for doing that. But there are other fees, both in F, principally in F, but also in G as well, whereby we don't necessarily need, in my view, to cover, recover 100%, although I'm mindful of, I think that the PowerPoint table was, what, 48%? I thought, we're going to go way up from 48% with this, right?
That's correct.
Okay. But I, what I would propose is that we give the general manager, in whom we already place a lot of discretion, the ability to say, based on a consultation with the Recreation and Park District, you know, I think we, we would be okay with less than 100% cost recovery in certain cases. And the city manager, under this amended motion, or I, I'm actually asking for an amendment to the form of motion, which you can figure out, maybe take that first, Mr. Mayor, however you want to do that. But the city manager would report any determinations to us. That's number one. And number two, those determinations would be reviewable by us if we didn't believe that they were in, that, that they should be implemented. Or, my understanding, I think, Mr. Sanchez, is that those, any fee determinations are appealable by the applicant to the council under Exhibits F and G, correct? Aren't those fees appealable by an applicant?
I believe that's correct, yes.
Right, so we would have either, either, either if, if we felt, wait a minute, there's, we don't know that we want to give that much of a reduction or a complete waiver in an amount, or conversely, if there was, if there was an appeal of those fees, then we, we, we would hear that as a city council prior to enactment. So that's what my motion is getting to. I otherwise support all of the, the work done, and again, I really appreciate the work that the Finance Committee has done. So what I would do is I would, I would, when I may, after comments, Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to amend the form of resolution that's presented to us tonight, to add Section 2C to that resolution with the language that I've proposed. So I'm ready to talk about that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions on that?
Thank you. So I hear what you're saying, Councilmember Trembley, and there's no doubt in my mind that parks and rec and nonprofits provide such an important service to our community. And being in the nonprofit sector myself, I think I'm biased to, to really empathize with that work as well. But I think what I'm seeing here, it's, it's two separate issues, and I feel like it gets a little messy to try to incorporate that amendment into what staff has been working on and the committee has been working on. So I personally don't feel that I have all of that information to fully evaluate if we were to do any reduction in a way, in, in fees. What I would feel more comfortable with is just moving forward with staff's recommendations, allowing the city manager to work directly with each organization. And if council prefers, we could always bring back, have staff bring back information on evaluating possible waivers for, you know, certain organizations. So we are being fair. So I think it, for me, in my mind, it feels a little cleaner if we do it that way. That would be to move forward to approve the recommendations as stated.
Mr. Mayor, may I, may I respond?
We'll get back to your response.
You know, thank you, Councilmember Martinez Bravo. Thanks, Martina, for those views. What I'm trying to avoid, I, I see a real distinction between Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District, on the one hand, based on the number and the scope of projects that are continually coming to the city, and you saw that in their letter to our city manager, versus a nonprofit group like a Kidstream or something else where there may be one major project where we could, you know, we could, they would like, more than likely, speak with the city manager or, or come to us and, and talk to them. What I'm trying to do is, is eliminate or reduce a situation where we have fees for, for many, many projects for that particular entity, which is so important to meeting our community goals in terms of our recreational and health aspects, and putting that discretion in the city manager to make a determination as to what in the city manager's discretion would be the right amount to recover, knowing, assuming that the council were to adopt this, that we would be requiring less than 100% cost recovery because we know that it's of direct public benefit. That, to me, actually seems cleaner, because I can make the distinction between, you know, for example, I didn't, I'm making a distinction, the healthcare district is another wonderful public agency that does, but they're not before us on a regular basis doing these kinds of projects, nor are any other public entities that I'm aware of, including the school districts. This is just such an exception to the rule, and nonprofits may come before us once every so often for something. But Rec and Park is before us all the time, or before us. They are advancing projects to the city all the time for review. So I was just trying to give, I was trying to deal with it in that way, rather than the other side of it, the converse, which is, you know, they're feeling that they need to come before us often, or dealing, or, or having this, this issue continue to arise. If we don't like what the city manager is doing with respect to any particular project, because there's, there would always be a report to us, we can say, wait a minute, stop. We don't, we don't want to do that. Or there's an appeal coming out of the Rec and Park District, but otherwise, I'm trying to, to place the discretion on our city manager. And I think by putting it as a separate section to C in the F and G, I think it actually works very cleanly. So I just see it, you know, it's tomato, tomato. I just see it, I see it differently, and I think we're able to meet that need by this motion, and that's, you know, obviously my, my view. Thanks.
Yeah, no, you're welcome. And I, I mean, I, I just see it differently, where I think I don't have that full information to evaluate that reduction in fees. So I think if we could bring that information back, to me, I think that would be cleaner as we can really look from a, a perspective of being fair. But that's, I, I think we're just going back and forth, but I think we just disagree on that. Yeah.
Any other comments?
Not right now.
From, you have a comment?
Sure.
So, I guess what I'm, what I'm, my concern is, is that we're going to have other groups that want to waiver a reduction in fees. However, they could then appeal, though, on their own.
Yes.
I'm actually agreeing with you, Councilmember Trembley. I think this is, I think this is a cleaner way to go, and I do think that the amount of projects that Pleasant Valley Rec and Park has, and it just makes a lot sense. And to me, it does seem cleaner to have a part of this. And those are my comments.
So, my comment is, I generally, I see what you're trying to do here. I have a couple of concerns with it. And one of my concerns is I want to make sure that this is not a total hall pass on a waiver of fees here. I personally, I know there's any, a council member up here, I would not want to stop any projects that the Park and Recreation District would have that would benefit a lot of our residents here. I don't want the fees to, I don't think anybody else up here does. But I don't want it to see that it's a total, again, hall pass, that it waives all fees, because we do have staff time that is involved in this. I think it does kind of make the city manager somewhat of a gatekeeper here, too. That is a concern of mine, too. Now, I know that you have respectfully said that it'll go back to the city council for discussion on this, and I think that's a good thing. I generally support this, but I do have some concerns that there is at least a potential for some abuse with this. And that is something I think that we need to have a discussion on here, whether or not we need to table this and work on it a little bit more, where we have a full council available to us, or if we feel we can give enough direction tonight to get where, at least, what I'm hearing, a couple of council members want to go. So those are my comments, and those are my concerns on this. I'm not quite comfortable and there yet.
Mr. Mayor, can I respond?
You can.
So just taking a list, first of all, and I, I fully recognize what you're saying. You, you don't want this to be, I think you refer to it as, as a total hall pass on, on a waiver of fees, and I, I think it's actually quite the opposite. I, I don't think it's a hall pass at all, because what we are doing is we are putting the discretion in the hands of the city manager based on consultation with the Recreation and Park District, which, by the way, we all know, the Recreation and Park District is financially constrained in terms of their budget and what they can do here in the community. And I also know, believe that those facilities are of direct benefit for the public. This is not, I would submit to you, a hall pass. Let's say that it's 100%, you know, we're, we're moving to, we're not moving in an incremental way here. We're moving to recover 100% of those fees. Well, if the Recreation and Park District, for example, came to us and say, you know, we think we can do this project, but, but can we, could we please pay just 80%? Right, I'm making, this is hypothetical. We're not asking for a waiver. We're asking to pay 80% rather than 100%. And if our city manager felt that, based on a consultation with staff and with, with the district, Mr. Sanchez and his department, okay, that, that is a, that is a fair request. That, to me, is not a hall pass, and that is not an abuse of discretion, and I, I would, or a, a potential for abuse. What that is, is it's a, in my view, a reasoned, consistent application of discretion by the city manager in whom we place great faith. And if we don't like what that discretion is, then we can always step in and say, stop, because those will be, that matter, those determinations will be reported to us, and we have, in accordance with this motion, we have the chance to, to review that. The second thing that you mentioned was making the city manager a gatekeeper, and you're right. We would be making the city manager a gatekeeper, but I would, in my view, the city manager's a gatekeeper for just about everything we do, in terms of the discretion that we place in him and her as our assistant city manager to do. So I'm not discomfited by this. I think it's, and again, I think it's a, I think this particular example is distinguishable from the nonprofits or the other public entities, just because, given the sheer scope of what they do. So that would be my, that would be my response.
Mayor, if, if I may suggest, so I know Councilmember Tennyson is not here today, and he definitely put in a significant amount of work in the, in our committee to evaluate this. So if I could propose that we move forward with staff's recommendations, pass that or vote on that, and then bring back to the council this, this part that you're talking about on 2C with further information. And I think getting that input from Mr. Tennyson, I think, would be helpful. He's not here due to an emergency, but I think that would be extremely helpful.
Mr. Mayor?
And so I would, I guess I would, I would motion to pass staff's recommendations as stated, and then bring back that. Sure.
I think another approach to that would be, and I understand and I, I respect that approach, another approach would be to defer action on this item tonight. Continue, I don't know if we'd have to continue the public hearing or not, I think we've closed the public hearing on it, but continue this action to the next regular meeting of the council where Mr. Tennyson is present. And in the interim, we could send it back to Finance Committee, if we wish, and have them review it. But I don't know whether or not there's going to, there would be a problem if we deferred this tonight, so I'm looking at Mr. Sanchez and Mr. Ramirez to see, if we deferred this again, what kind of prejudice would that have?
Deferring the item, I, I don't believe would kind of change anything materially. Again, the effective date that we're looking at is July 1st, so there is time. One other thing that the council may want to consider is, the council's already asked us to come back with information on fee waivers for fire-affected victims within the community. If we wanted to bring back additional research on this topic as well, we could do both at the same time.
That would, go ahead.
Well. That sounds.
Or is that a separate?
That.
And when I say that.
Yes, I, I, I think the proposal, at least by Councilmember Trembley, I think is, is reasonable. I think the building code already grants, grants me the authority by, by way in consultation with the building official to address these type of, type of issues, so, and we have had multiple conversations over the years with the park district on this exact type of thing. This is not something that, that we aren't, in essence, doing already. They are an extension of the city, even though they have their own elected body and whatnot. Councilmembers, right, they are, in essence, our park and rec department. We wouldn't charge ourselves these type of things. We would cover our own costs, what it would to implement these kind of projects. And, and I, I do think that they are the only public entity in the city that that really applies to. We have a really good relationship, and we work well with them. And it's not only just, say, playground equipment, but it's other things that they do, especially use permits and things where maybe a large tent, you have to inspect and whatnot, and so, you know, in the spirit of cooperation, I think it's a, a reasonable thing. We certainly can, can certainly approve it tonight, and we can certainly bring back additional information to you. I don't think it's really, the, I think it's a fairly modest request, if I could put it that way.
What I would. Mr. Trembley?
Well, I, 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 I in turn would, would like to, to make the motion, I'd rather, I, I would like to make the motion, rather than have us, rather than have us approve the staff recommendation without any amendment to it, I would prefer, alternatively, that it, that the matter be set over until Councilmember Tennyson gets back. But what I would really like to do, if I can, is to make the motion, the one that I've distributed, see where council is on it, and if it's approved, fine, if it's not, it's not, and then it can go back to, I, I really would like to try to do something on this tonight, but I also recognize that Councilmember Tennyson isn't here. So I think, to me, I would, I, I don't, I would prefer not to approve this without the motion, approve it, approve the staff recommendation as it was made to us. I'd rather defer the matter and then have it brought back to us in the future, and in the interim, I'm fine with having the Finance Committee discuss this or thoroughly, since Councilmember Tennyson couldn't be here tonight, because I, we're not in a rush on this. So rather than make a motion and take any action on this tonight at all, that's what I would prefer to do.
Any other comments before I make mine?
Yeah, no, I hear what you're saying. I think I, I made my motion, and then we can, if I can get a second.
My suggestion would be that we, it'd be a little cleaner deal, I think, if we had the full council discuss that, this issue, and to defer, my suggestion is defer for the next meeting. I want to get, I want to get on this, I really do. My suggestion is that we do defer this till the next meeting, for all the reasons that were stated there. I think it, it would behoove us to do that.
Right. And I mean, I, obviously, I'm not part of the committee, and I'm, so I'm constrained by what I can do, so that's why I had to bring this tonight, for the, for the first time.
And Mayor and Council, I could just say two things. I think Councilmember Martinez Bravo is saying she's made a motion. She made a motion, so I think she's hoping that there'd at least be an ask for the second. And if there's not, that's fine, but I believe that's what she's saying. And then I just, I want to, you know, after that discussion, I want to make sure, because it's a public hearing, to make clear that we've closed the public comment portion of the hearing, but we may be continuing it. So I just want to put a pin in that, depending on where this motion goes, to make sure the record's clear on that.
So let me do this, if Councilmember Martinez Bravo, would you restate your motion, please?
My motion was to move forward with staff's recommendations as stated.
As stated?
Yes.
For a second. I don't hear a second. Okay, so that lies from a lack of a second.
Sure.
Okay, so we're opened up now for another motion to be in order.
So I can make another motion. I can make another motion to table this item until Councilmember Tennyson returns.
Is there a second on that?
May I ask a question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, you may.
I don't know whether or not, is the intent to table this matter, or is the intent to continue this matter to the next regular meeting of the, of the city council?
Yes, it would be to continue until the next council meeting. Continue this item.
Okay. And as part of the motion is a continuation of the public hearing on this matter?
I believe that would be appropriate, but I will state for the record that we have taken public comment that opened, so we're continuing the public hearing portion, but we have concluded the public comment portion of the public hearing.
So I'm going to ask, would that be part of your motion?
Yes, that is fine.
I'll second the motion.
There's a second, and there's a motion and a second. I think we're going to get there, who knows? Is there any further discussion on this? Hearing none, will you please take a roll call?
Councilmember Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Councilmember Santangelo?
Yes.
Councilmember Trembley?
Yes.
And Mayor Kildee?
Yes. Okay, that passed unanimously on that. So I'm going to get, councilors, are there any comments on the closed session, anything we need to?
Yeah, no reportable action from closed session, thank you.
Okay, and I'm going to ask, too, that is there anybody in the public that wants to make any public comments at this particular time as well? Nope. All right, so I'm going to ask the council, before we adjourn, I have asked the city clerk to adjourn in the memory of Shirley Fitzgerald, I think we have something to go up, and Robert Taylor. And I'm going to start with Shirley Fitzgerald, Mary Jim Fitzgerald, who is a descendant of the Camrio family, and kids, Brian, there was Tom, and they were, she's a tremendous, and Carrie, tremendous person I've known, Shirley, my whole adult life. She was just a great cheerleader of Camrio here, and what a history of Camrio that they have. They're a huge part of the fabric of our community here. Shirley lived in just an outstanding life, loved the city council, loved living in the city of Camrio, loved the residents, known far and wide in the city as having one of the best smiles that I've ever seen a human being possess. And I'm going to say this right now, that Shirley's up in heaven, and I'm going to put her in charge of smiling in heaven, because look at that, that's, that was Shirley. I don't think Shirley had a bad bone in her body, I don't, not even sure she really had a bad day in her life. She probably did, but you'd never know it by seeing how she acted here, and loved being part of the Camrio family, and she's going to be really, really missed, and what a cheerleader, and what a cheerleader for her children and her grandchildren, and just a beautiful person inside and out. So Shirley's going to be, I'm going to miss Shirley, and I know a lot of other people are going to miss Shirley, too. And I think it's very appropriate that we adjourn in the memory of Shirley Lee Fitzgerald, one of the, one of the good people. And the second person I'd like to adjourn is Robert Edward Taylor, and Bob Taylor was in charge of turf construction. And Bob probably laid more pipe and underground utilities in Camrio than just about any company I think that I can recall. And a beautiful man, beautiful family, loved living in the city of Camrio. He'd always come and talk to me about what he could do for the betterment of our community. Bob was a giver, and he was a big supporter, and just a wonderful, wonderful person. And he was a role model for me, a role model for a lot of other people in our community, too. And passed away, actually, on October 16th of 2024. We had his service, I was there, was actually when the mountain fire broke out, so that was, that was really something. But Bob was just a tremendous person from a tremendous family, and he's got quite a, quite a lineage that he has left in, in our city. We wouldn't be the city if it had have been for the efforts of Bob Taylor. So with council concurrence, I'd like to adjourn in the memory of both those outstanding Camrio residents, some of the best and the brightest that this city has ever had. So those are my comments. All right, any other comments, anybody in, with no other business coming before the council? We stand adjourned.